All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Figure, somebody has something to say?
We did our back of the envelope math, and I think they did theirs, and so what I was-
We did ours.
Well, good, everyone's been doing back. None of us have envelopes, but we've all been doing our math. So I think we could reopen the hearing for the limited purpose of having them come up. If this is, if this is the only condition we're looking at, I think that we want to make sure that we don't resolve this, and then we have more. So if anyone else has issues with conditions, I think-
Mr. Mayor, there was one other, on page thirty-five in the packet, there was another condition of approval requiring peripheral yards to meet section seventeen dot eight-one dot oh-five. Has that already been met, or is that something that we need to add in as well?
No, it's in the current conditions of approval, and so that will come into play when they cite the homes on the lots. So we would look at that and ensure that that's being met. Yeah.
Thank you.
So the only issue, with counsel-
I just wanted to clarify, if we are to open it up, the hearing for the applicant, does that open up for the, for the public as well?
No, because what we're addressing specifically is the needed housing, the ORS one ninety-seven point five twenty-two sub-three, which we, they didn't previously have an opportunity to propose a condition, because previously, due to staff report in the planning commission recommendation, we didn't know that there was a condition at issue.
So it'd be a motion to open up-
Just for a discussion with the applicant as to whether they want to suggest a condition. It would allow, yes.
Could you just give a simple motion the council member can make?
I move to reopen the hearing to give an opportunity for the applicant to comply with ORS one ninety-seven point five twenty-two three.
Council President.
Okay. I move that we reopen the hearing for the sole purpose to give the applicant an opportunity to address-
Needed housing.
Needed housing section. Thank you. Would you like me to say ORS one-
I think it's on the record.
That's, that's the most-
Hearing a motion by Council President Grayson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polling, any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a clarifying question, procedural, is that okay? So they will come maybe with something, or they will speak. Do we then, then that's done? And then we talk about what was presented to us. We don't say something back in that moment? It can go back and forth.
Yeah, we can have questions about that.
Thank you.
Please step forward.
Good evening again, mayor and counselors. Garrett Stevenson for the record. My address is one-two-one-one Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen-hundred, Portland, Oregon nine-seven-two-oh-four. It's a little funny that here I am talking tonight, because I had dinner with my grandma who lives right across the road here, and she wanted to come watch. I said, "Don't come, I'm not going to be saying anything." So I'll pretend like I just sat there. So to just kind of, part of this, what we're going to engage in very, very briefly, is an attempt to understand what the council's concerns are, and see if we can, within the bounds of our ability as developers of the project, make, make an accommodation that still allows for a viable project while also addressing your concerns. And this is something that frankly, we, we thought about in the last week, and a lot of that is due to the very articulate testimony of Council President Grayson. And so we did look at this, and you know, as, as Lori mentioned, you know, going to six thousand square foot lots is simply not an option. And so we looked to, right now, our average is somewhat below five thousand square foot lots. For asking for forty-eight lots, the base zoning without the P, the PD process would allow us to have forty-six lots. Reduction in two lots would get our, would get the minimum lot size, or sorry, not the minimum lot size, the average lot size above five thousand square feet. But I don't know if that's enough where you're going, and, and the thing to keep in mind is, is that ultimately, when you decide on the condition of approval, the closer you get to that six thousand square foot number, the harder I think it's going to be to keep the plan development code viable going forward, as Lori mentioned. So I mean, it would be helpful for me, I mean, we can talk about a lot number, but it would be helpful for me to understand, and maybe it'd be, since you've kind of led the charge here, Council President, maybe for you to tell me what you're thinking here, and then maybe I can respond, and we can find a way to accommodate it.
So currently, the spread is three thousand four hundred and ten square feet to thirteen thousand eighty-three square feet. I understand that you keep referring to the median or the average square footage, but to me, that, that spread, very specifically that minimum, is what I'm having a hard time with, and that's what I'd like to address.
So, um, I think, and I understand that, and we know that there are lots already that's small and smaller in the city scapus, but I understand you guys have been through quite a series of hearings, and I, I'm not ignorant of the public concern about the project. And so I think we could get, you know, each, because of the, so we're trying to do a lot of things with this project, and I think I've mentioned this before, there's a lot of engineering that goes into it. And we want to make sure that we can still do the project, and, and that means not reducing the lots so much that it becomes essentially unbuildable. And so we looked at this, and we, we figured out a way, and we hope that it would satisfy your concern of getting the minimum, all the minimum, that, well, the average lot size would be substantially more than five thousand square feet. We can get all the lots above four thousand square feet, which would be, for a lot of those lots, an increase of six hundred, five hundred square feet, so forth. That's something we could probably do. We looked at doing that, or looked at adding a park amenity in, instead of having few of the lots. The idea being is that with the PD code, as I understand it, the idea is it's a balance between the amount of open space you have and the amount of lots you can get. Now, if we go down, lose, go down to forty-four, at that point, you're looking at two lots fewer than the number of lots we could get under the standard zoning, plus, you know, fifty-seven percent of the parcel being reserved for open space. And that would get all the lots above four thousand square feet. We cannot go, you know, we cannot get everything a lot above five thousand square feet. That's not financially feasible. We could probably get to where each lot, smallest lots are four thousand, and then we end up with forty-four instead of the eight.
Can I say what I was hoping? So I, I only taught as high as second grade, so my math isn't great, but I do know that if I take six thousand, which is our, our minimum usually, and then I take what you have as a minimum, and I find out what goes in between that, that gets us to forty-seven hundred square feet. So you're, you're saying meet, meet, meet us at the four thousand?
Yeah, because the problem is, is it, and that, your math would work great if this were a standard site, right?
I understand that.
And the problem we have with focusing on the smallest lot size is that we've, as Lori said, we're clustering these, and they have to be clustered to make room for the creek. That's the simple way of looking at it. So doing forty-seven hundred square feet, I don't think that's feasible. I don't know.
I think you have the minimum.
Okay, yeah. And so, yeah, like I said, I think if, if it were just a flat field with no issues that we had to work around, you'd probably do that, but the problem we have is we can't move these lots around anywhere else on property, which means we can't make them larger and still protect the natural resources on the property. So four thousand is really as far down as we can go in terms of the lot count. At, at a certain point, it becomes more sensible to come back with a straight subdivision, which, you know, not necessarily go through planning commission, and would not have as much open space associated with it. So what I'm trying to do is make this project work because of the amount of open space we'd be offering the city in number of amenities we're offering, without having to say, "Well, it's just not going to pencil, there's no way we can make that work." And coming back with just a straight subdivision application, which I don't think the council would like, frankly, as much as this one today. So I would say four thousand is probably, and remember, we're, we're talking about four thousand, we're talking about the smallest lot.
Yes.
We worked it out, smallest lot's just a little over four thousand square feet, but the average is substantially above five thousand square feet, and most of the lots are in that, most of the smallest lots, not most lots, most of the smallest lots are in that forty-five hundred square foot range. So we're adding a substantial amount of square feet to the smallest lots. But I don't think, yeah, forty-seven hundred square feet, that, that would kill, I don't know how many lots. Be a substantial number. And remember, you know, we're already now at forty-four.
Right.
Two lots beneath what we could get through a standard subdivision. So we're really not getting anything extra from the PD process at all. We're offering a lot extra in the way of the public amenities, the pathway, and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the average would be, the minimum lot would be four thousand, and you're losing four lots on that?
That's correct.
Okay, because I went through and counted, it looked like there was twenty-three that were under four thousand.
You don't, yeah. You don't have the new plan in front of you.
Plan you have doesn't reflect what we're talking about.
Okay. It's kind of those, so.
So we looked at it, and-
Can I just clarify? Lori is saying the plan we have in front of us is not what you are proposing at this moment.
Plan you have in front of you is forty-eight lots.
It would be a condition of approval that would be held to that. We have, we have, we have the right materials for those that maybe didn't hear that correct. We have the right materials in front of us.
You would say-
Give us to a half an hour ago.
Say, for, for approval, you would direct them to provide a new plat-
Yes.
The four thousand lot-
Minimum.
Minimum, and at that point, they would figure out how to engineer that to meet that condition. And what I'm hearing him saying when he says that he doesn't think they can go below forty-four, is that we're not going to have an exaction process at the forty-four lot, four thousand square foot-
He's agreeing to it.
Yeah, I mean, I need to, I need you to clarify that on the record.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, if, if the, we would, so, right, it, it, when you say exaction, we're, I think what you're referring to is conditions of approval as in relation to the number of lots. Yeah, if the, if the council imposes a condition requiring setting a maximum number of lots, I think would be the right way to characterize it, at forty-four instead of forty-eight, that gets us all the lots, even in the small end, above four thousand square feet. The nice thing about it is we don't have to change the engineering of the project. We make the lots larger, but we don't have to change where the road goes, and so we were trying to work within those constraints. But yeah, if that's where the council goes, we would, we would not contest in the conditions of approval or exactions.
Oh, the condition would be-
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, did that, was that-
Right, I just, I just want it very clearly on the record that, that we, if they impose a condition of a maximum number of lots at forty-four, in a minimum lot size of four thousand square feet, that we don't have a Nolan or Dolan issue.
No, we're comfortable with the public improvements that we've been required to do for the forty-eight lots is also being required for the forty-
Counsel Miller.
I just want to be clear that in, in doing this, it would be reducing the number of lots, and we would not be using any green space to accomplish this.
Yeah, so that's a really good question, Counsel Miller. We looked, we looked at a couple different options. One was to add green space when removing lots, but that wouldn't actually have an effect on the minimum lot size. So what we did is, in simple terms, we recasted, and, and this is in a very conceptual way, recasted the lot lines particularly on, on the, on the main lane there, to make sure that we could get all those lots slightly larger, so there's no reduction proposed in the amount of open space. And, and all the public improvements that are already proposed would remain the same. It's just that the lots would be bigger.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else? Questions? Then I'll go ahead and close, reclose the, this limited public input, or input from the, the applicant, back to the council. So is everyone comfortable with the forty-four lots, four thousand?
I would feel more comfortable with it, yes.
Certainly, it certainly is an improvement. Sure that they do much better.
It sounds like that, yeah, the option is they come back with a R-one development with forty-six lots, and no public improvements.
I would like to see this land developed with as much preservation of green space, and it seems like forty-four homes, instead of coming back with forty-six with a different plan as a subdivision, would be what I would choose to go for.
Counsel Miller, you're leaning toward the microphone. I figured that's, means you want to speak.
Oh, I didn't realize I was, sorry. But I am in agreeance with what Council President Grayson just said. I think that we have, in lack of a better term, more control, and we, we essentially get more out of this with the plan development versus them coming, coming back with a different proposal, really. Or different application, sorry.
Is there anything else?
I have plenty of comments, but not to the decision of this.
Oh, not to this, not to this at all?
I mean, it's to this, but I think we need to make the decision, not in this setting.
So I, I think at this point, we, if there's no other changes that anyone wants to discuss, which I got the understanding that was the case.
That's what I wanted to bring up.
You have others?
No, I said that's, that's what I wanted to bring up.
I think what we're looking for, if someone was to make a motion to put this under first reading, it'd be a motion to approve ordinance nine oh-nine, thereby approving SB one dash two-two, ZC's one dash two-two, CU one two-two, SLDP one-two-two, two-two-two, three-two-two, and four-two-two, and accept the findings and conditions of approval as amended to include a condition of a maximum of forty-four lots and minimum of four-
Yeah, maximum of forty-four lots, minimum four thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Thank you.
And, and that's the motion that would be made on a first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Polling.
I move that council approve ordinance nine oh-nine, thereby approving SB one, SB one twenty-two, ZC one twenty-two, CU one twenty-two, SLDP one twenty-two, two twenty-two, three twenty-two, and four twenty-two, and accept the findings, conditions of approval as amended with minimum lot size of four thousand square feet and maximum unit at forty-four units.
Hearing a motion by Council, Counsel Polling, I just promoted you, and you're leaving at the end of the year. Hearing a motion by Counsel Polling, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McHugh. All right. Motion to approve ordinance number nine oh-nine, thereby approving SB one dash two-two, ZC dot one dash two-two, CU one dash two-two, SLDP one dash two-two, two dash two-two, three dash two-two, and four dash two-two, and accept the findings and conditions of approval as amended to include minimum lot size of four thousand square feet and a maximum of forty-four lots is on first reading. The ordinance is ordinance number nine oh-nine, and ordinance relating to land use, amending the scapus zoning map, and approving the Buxton Ranch Plan Development Subdivision, conditional use incentive lands, development permit application. It will be back next week on the nineteenth for final discussion and approval or not. We are now done with that section.
Are we going to open up the public comment?
Yeah, we are moving back to public comments. Joel Paugen, please come down, you're the next, oh, wait.
I'm back. Oh, I started off with a conversation with Hathaway Larson Attorneys. They had raised some concerns with the scapus municipal code application and the Oregon revised statutes. So I'm just going to go through them real quickly, so I can stay within a five-minute timeframe. Okay, section seventeen point one-six-two point oh-nine-zero lists the approval authority responsibilities. Code one seventeen one-six-two oh-nine-zero C discusses the planning commission's process and states of, states that the planning commission shall conduct a public hearing in the manner prescribed by this chapter. That must construe, be construed to mean chapter seventeen point one-six-two. Next one, code seventeen one-six-two point oh-nine-zero D states that upon appeal or recommendation, city council shall conduct a public hearing in the manner prescribed by this chapter. That is the same procedure the planning commission must use. Next, the required procedure for both hearings, those at the planning commission and at the council, are in code one seven, seventeen point one-six-two point one-three-zero. Those procedures are the same as set forth in state law. Specifically, ORS two-two-seven one-seven-five allows consolidated application and requires a quasi-judicial hearing process in, in Oregon statutes, one-nine-seven point seven-nine-seven B followed. The city procedures for quasi-judicial procedures specifically direct the presiding officer to tell people they must raise all of their issues with specificity at the quasi-judicial hearing. It has no limitation that no written material can be submitted, as was the case last week. The procedures allow-
I'm sorry, I have to object. This is directly in line with the, with the discussion that this was raised during the hearing, and I'd asked the mayor not allow any more testimony on any subject that was discussed in relation to the application you just did first reading for.
Yeah, it's still on first reading, so we're still under the same terms.
You already, you already moved to first read. Can I move to the last part then?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to get, I'm going to go away from the statutes. This will come, this will come back on remand anyway, but the next concern is this case of substantive defect in any application, not just this one. Counsel can use it's a-
No, I mean, he's talking about remanding the herring that we just heard.
Yeah. There, you're talking about something that's still under first reading, hasn't been voted on, and it's providing testimony.
Well, I, I'm going to, I'm going to leave this with you for, for your discretion.
I'd, I'd prefer not to, yeah, if you could give that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Paul Fedrich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul Fedrich, scapus. So I've had this date circle on my calendar for a long time, and goes back to some news that I heard a couple months ago relating to you, Scott Burge. I thought this was going to be your last night.
I did too.
So as you guys know, I do a lot of public comments. I attend pretty much every meeting I can in scapus, which I'm sure you all love. And we take very seriously our public comment. We do a lot of work beforehand. We being anyone that's going to do public comment. We make sure we're prepared. And we read, we read a lot, read a lot of things that happened beforehand, things that are going on currently, and try to be factual and considerate, and also just raise issues. And I wanted to personally thank Mayor Scott Burge for being very open to allowing me and others public comment. As you said earlier, kind of set me up for this. You know, maybe we don't always see the same eye to eye, but that's okay. It creates communication and discussion. And you've always been welcoming and with a smile, and making it easier for us. You know, it's not easy, like we get a little nervous, you know, we got things down here, we got, we're in front of the microphone, people are watching and whatever. And you've, you've been a big part of making us feel welcome. You guys know that I've been here for about two and a half years, and you've welcomed me into the community and allowed me to speak, and listen to some of my comments that you've taken, some with a grain of salt, and some hopefully maybe cause people to think about things differently. I've heard stories that back in the day, the meetings were kind of quiet, and not much public comment at all.
Goes back and forth.
And I think a lot of it has to do with you, Mayor Burge, for being open and willing to hear us. And I wanted to thank you personally, and you will be missed.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, before you go, I want to thank you. You know, you're right, you, you know, we haven't always disagreed, which is fine, but what you've done in this community, including, you know, you helped organize the run for Dale, which I ran the first year, even though I was nowhere in shape to do it, and couldn't even do it this year. Maybe next year, I got to get back on to my bike riding, and I expect Joel to help me with that, because, but, you know, I ran a, helped organize Wings and Wheels for five years, and I understand the work that goes into it, and the passion that you have to have. We even did a run. In fact, we, we got our half marathon certified to be a qualifier, so people go to other marathons. And of course, it was the last year we had it. But thank you for everything that you do for the community. So it's greatly appreciated for everyone that volunteers, because, you know, my favorite poem, sometimes I post, it's a Teddy Roosevelt poem about, you know, the credit goes to the people that are in the arena, other people standing on the sidelines watching, but the people that show up to comment, the people that run for office and learn how bad of a person they are from their opponents. I like to say that, if you ever want to find out how bad of a person you are, run for office, somebody will tell you. You know, taking the criticism and, but moving forward and doing the job- You know, taking the criticism and, but moving forward and doing the job and it's, sometimes it's hard. I've had moments where, these are tears of joy tonight, but I've been in tears of pain over, and if you look over the twenty-four years, most people could try to figure out when I was in tears of pain. You know, I've gotten the phone call, there's been an officer involved shooting and an officer was fortunately not shot, but in the hospital. And, you know, those aren't calls you want to have. I've had to make the call to cancel a council meeting because there's a bomb threat at City Hall. You know, and one of the things I missed the most about the pandemic was I used to have a really great camaraderie with the police department and the police officers and that kind of, those walls that were put up during COVID really kind of shackled that. And, you know, my hope is that going forward, the city, we can tear down those walls and start getting together again and communicating not over, you know, cameras. Because you lose something, you lose that personal emotional reaction or the, the, and everything. So thank you for everything that you do and, you know, I'm looking forward, like I said, I'm looking forward to seeing what the next chapter for the city of Scappus unfolds because I think we're set up for, you know, a great future. And so everyone that's volunteered, thank you all because without you, we wouldn't be able to get things done. Without you telling us, you know, there are issues with different things and listening, you know, we, if we only hear one, one report and we don't hear community members, we're making decisions in a vacuum. If we have community members coming forward or at least hearing that there's issues and we can address those issues, I always tell people, speak up. I always tell people, speak up where there's council. I, one of the things you find out and for the new members, you'll get people to come up to you and complain about a police officer. I'm not going to say any names. I always tell them, report it, you know why? Because if you don't report it, no one might know. If it's something that's wrong and they're doing it wrong, if they don't have a report, there's nothing, there's no evidence built up. But it's always important to me to report that type of stuff so that there's a record. You know, and building those records, whether it's parks or roads or everything, making sure we have the information. You don't know how much was done because in two thousand and two, we did a rail corridor study. I like drive is because of that rail corridor study. Only reason we got the, I call it the Obama bucks, but it was the money after the Great Recession that we got to build that crossing, which gave us Buy Mart, Plotonals, Les Schwab, Goodwill, and Candle Apartments. But those Candle Apartments, we were able to save the candle, which they could have come in there and just knocked it down. So the things I'm going to miss, I'm gonna, I wish the candle was done before my time was done. I wish the Tesla's chargers were in, but things take time, you know? I pushed to have an ordinance so we could have a food cart pod. I'm looking forward to that happening, you know, and, you know? So thank you, and it's, you know, talking to people, listening. I, first thing I told Joe was, guess what? Give yourself twenty to thirty extra minutes when you go to Fred Meyer because you're going to need it. And this is no, is not as much, when, when he takes over as mayor, that he's kind of that face and people are going to come to him specifically because he's the mayor. And that'll happen and, you know, I will look forward to having that extra twenty minutes. So thank you, Paul. Marissa Jacobs. Okay. Deb Miller.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have a traffic safety concern. Thank you for letting me speak. I've just recently started joining the city council meetings and I am honored to be able to speak when I have concerns. So I really appreciate this. Everything you just said, Mayor Burge, about, you know, the fear of, of getting up and saying something really resonated with me. So thank you for saying that because you just gave me a little extra courage to go ahead and tell you what my, my traffic concern is. And this is two and a half minutes, so it won't take long. Again, my name is Deb Miller and I live at five-two-three-six-six Southwest Jobin Lane in Scappus. And I'm concerned about traffic speed and safety on JP West Street. I'm specifically concerned about the last three tenths of a mile section where traffic comes from the West Hill down to the intersection of Highway thirty. Over twenty-four years, I've traveled that section of road to and from my home and I've witnessed and heard about many incidents of close calls with vehicles and pedestrians and animals being struck.
So can I, Deb, could you please send a request? I think it's, who's the head of our traffic safety committee?
Hugh.
Hugh.
You can send it to.
You can send it to Alex.
Send it to me.
Yeah, so we have a process for traffic when we're looking at traffic issues.
Oh, great, okay.
So I would send that to Alex Rains at the city and she'll forward it to the traffic safety committee.
Thank you, I certainly will.
We're going to have some more flexibility in this upcoming year of determining speed limits for, and every city is going to have a little bit more ability. Not a whole lot because ODOT doesn't like to give us too much, but we will have slightly more flexibility. I don't know, can't promise it'll give everyone what they want, but a little more local control.
Well, thank you for your consideration and thank you for your long tenure, Mayor Burge.
Thank you, Ted, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Just on, you know, I, I'll tell you what I wish. You know, we always see the signs in the trailers that flash the thing. Everyone sees that, they slow down. I'd really wish that there was recording devices where you didn't know that it was a recording device, just a random car parked with it in the back, recording the speed so that you catch the reality and not, oh, there's a traffic slowdown speed there, so I'm going to adjust my behavior. Then when it's gone, I'm going to go back. Because number one complaint throughout the city is people are always going too fast.
There is one thing I learned regarding that. It also catches your speed on the backside of the sign. Oh, I mean, people might still see the sign, but they're not going to see the flashing, you know, number in front of them. So it does get speed both directions, which is a little better data than.
Than just one way, yeah.
Still not, we'd like it.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward. Calendar check, I have a calendar around here somewhere. Now, the Parks Committee meeting has been canceled for this Thursday. This Thursday, there is an Economic Development Committee meeting at noon. I assume it's still going on. The city will be closed on Friday, the twenty-third, for the holidays and closed on the twenty-sixth, and then closed again on the thirtieth for the holidays. Our next city council meeting will be a special meeting to consider, to consider the ordinance number nine oh nine tonight and also to approve the, accept the, accept the vote from November. So, so that Joel, Joe can officially take my place. I'll be a very happy I. City Manager Rains.
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
Your chief is not here. Counsel Miller.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Counsel Polling.
I'll kind of keep mine short. I, I'll save any other comments for the next meeting on my last meeting anyways for that part. I do want to just say, you know, I do appreciate everybody that comes out to these meetings. I know we've had a lot bigger turnout most recently. You know, as, up here as a council would really appreciate people, you know, with their comments and anytime, anytime we have a meeting to be in public, to be a part of that process. And we have plenty of opening spaces all, all the time in all of our committees. We're always looking for people. So if you want to be part of the decision-making process, there is, there's always space for you. So thank you, that's all I have.
Counsel Spencer.
I had kind of mentioned it when Kara gave her overview of the Parks Committee, but I had had a follow-up meeting with the Director of the YMCA, who we started that after-school program with. And I'm just really excited to hear kind of their shift in their offerings. You know, it was, you have to come for five days a week or, or, and if you don't, you pay for the five days a week. And I think that that's been really hard for our community. They only might need it two days or three days. And so now that they've got kind of the numbers a little bit more solidified, they're willing and open to offer some more options. And I think that we'll get a lot more families that'll be able to access that opportunity. And then again, capitalizing on the, on the chance to provide more recreation and camps here in Scappus, which will be really great. And then I'm really excited, unfortunately, the meetings overlapped, but the school board met tonight and Mike Russell, the Public Works Director for Columbia County, we were able to get him on the agenda to go over the Safe Routes to School grant that we got for just the design. You know, we're in this limbo, we've heard it over and over, that we're too rich or, you know, we're not a Title I school district. And so it's really hard to access a lot of grants. And we've been turned down with Safe Routes to School in the past. Our application has, we're actually building sidewalks, but at least the county was able to access something that would get design stages paid for. And he was presenting that to, to the school district and the community tonight at that meeting. The community club is doing a city light contest. So you can go online and see the route of which homes are participating in Christmas light decorating. You can also go to the library, they have the map and the information out there. Kind of a fun thing to do with your families. And we have it here at, at the city. Thanks, Susan. Participate, vote.
Counsel Losowski, nothing to report, thank you. Counsel McHugh.
You'll find that, a list of homes in the lighting contest on the Scappus Historical Society website. It's, it's right there when you look in there. So it is, there are a lot of really nice visual displays. There's also going to be a community parade in, in Scappus on December seventeenth. And then prior to that, my understanding is there's going to be kind of bazaar at the high school that they're going to be doing as part of the, so that's something to, you know, about. And Watts House had a very excellent czar and sale of Christmas items last, last Saturday and went very, very well and her own, Isaac Butler was kind of, had a really nice display and did a great job there. So it's very, very excellent. A lot of good things happening at the Watts House right now in the Historical Society. That's it.
I think I've said enough. Thank you for everything. I will see you next week. I'll have more to say at my very last meeting, meeting adjourned.